Okay.
We are live.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. And I want to welcome our local board, our school board leaders, to our round table that we are having here with the Maryland State Board of Education and the Maryland State Department of Education. It's my pleasure to facilitate this. My name is Clarence Crawford, and I serve as president of the state board. And with me is Chip DeShiel, who is our vice president, and our superintendent, I believe, will be joining us as well. We have, I want to just again welcome everyone. We have with, from the state board, Mr. Scharn Bartley, and then our student member, Mr. Kevin Bakum. This is again an opportunity to start a conversation. We're really looking to build a partnership. We recognize that we have different roles and we clearly want to respect our roles and responsibilities, but we are really seeking an opportunity to come together as a team in Maryland as we look at and work towards implementing the blueprint and the strategy. Chip will talk a little bit about our strategic plan. We're going to release on, at a board meeting next week, the first information from this statewide survey. We've gotten over 22,000 responses. And I'll preview one thing, the number one priority across all groups, race, gender, teacher, student, business community, is improve education for the reading for our students. So that's the number one thing that everybody in Maryland is saying consistently. There are a number of other good pieces of information there that we want to share. This is the second of four round tables. This is the start of a, of a conversation that we want to have. Want to, at this time, give Chip an opportunity to make some opening comments.
Thank you, President Crawford, and I want to thank all of our participants this afternoon for joining what I know is going to be a very important and beneficial conversation for our local board representatives as well as for the state board and the state department. The state board and state department have been working together over the last two or three months and are going to be continuing to work together for a number of months in the future to develop a strategic plan. This plan is going to transform the educational experience for all of our Maryland students. And stakeholder engagement is certainly a very critical component of our planning process. And local boards of education are critical stakeholders in both the development and the implementation of our strategic plans. So I look forward today to hearing your thoughts on how we can collaborate together on this very important initiative for education in Maryland. All of us value your leadership. We value your experience in our shared mission to deliver a world-class education for all of the kids of Maryland. So thank you today for being on this conversation with us. And as President Crawford said, we look forward to continuing that conversation in other forums at other times to develop the strategic plan together. So thank you for all you do and for being with us today. I'll turn it over to our state superintendent, Mr. Mohammed Shodri, for any opening remarks that he'd like to make.
Thank you. Thank you for making the time to hang out with us today. I really have enjoyed visiting your school systems. I have officially visited all of them. I think I could say a little something about all of them. I'm trying to see who's in the room. I do see Allegheny. You know, Superintendent Blank made me stay at the Gunther Hotel, and he said it was haunted. So I was not happy that he did that when he made me stay there. And it did definitely seem like it was haunted. But I had a great time at Mountain Ridge High School and, and shadowing. I don't know if you guys know, if they've told you, I shadow a student and I truly like spend half the day with them. I'll do their assignments and I'll do everything else. And so it's a little different. I'm not a fan of dog and pony show. So I've done that now officially in all 24. You know, I was at Cecil County. I saw the amazing literacy work that you guys are doing. I was at Frederick County. I was at Frederick High School. We made pumpkin Thai cupcakes during the culinary class, and I had never done that before. And so I did enjoy doing that. And I was also at Waverly Elementary. And congratulations on building the newer building. And so I'm excited to see that. I was at Charles County, visiting a student with perfect attendance all her life. She has never missed a dip school. She's a fifth grader, which I don't know how you do that. And of course, St. Mary's County, I have enjoyed my time there. You know, I have to visit Chopticon High School. The fact that I can say that really fast now, I'm very proud that I can do that. And I had just had a great time visiting. Yeah, I really liked that the superintendent has a student advisory council. So all of that to say is, I'm not done. I'll keep coming back. I really do like shadowing students. It's the best way for me to learn about your system. But today's about listening from you about what we can do as a department to better service our local school systems. But I just wanted to let you know, like, the best thing that I learned about from your system is by spending a day with a student, doing assignments with them and seeing what their experience is like. So just so you get a sense of how I like to go about visiting and engaging your school system. So I know I didn't get everyone, but, but I do appreciate you guys making the time today. And I'm looking forward to this conversation. President Crawford?
Thank you. Thank you. I want to just give Sean and Kevin an opportunity for some brief comments. And then I'm going to go to Jenny. Sean, did you have any? You're muted.
Okay, thanks. I was having computer issues. I'm thankful for the opportunity to meet with you all today. I'm a good listener. And I love the state of Maryland. I've been on the board now for two years. And one of my favorite counties to visit is St. Mary's County. I don't visit in the capacity as a board member, but I've had the opportunity to visit most of the counties in Maryland as an attorney. And I particularly enjoy visiting St. Mary's County and all of our remote counties in Maryland, who I think embody the true spirit of our state. And it's a pleasure to be here with you today. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Kevin?
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Tom Bakum. I'm a student member of the state board. I'm so pleased to have all of you here today so we can have that candid and beneficial discussion. I know just last year I served as a student member on a local board for Washington County. So right next to Allegheny, and also this year I've done lots of traveling around the state. I'm visiting schools, actually, talking with other students like myself. So I'm really excited to have conversations about who we're all here for, students.
Thank you. Jenny? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Good morning. I'm Virginia McGraw, and I'm currently the president of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. So we're really thrilled that we are having these roundtable discussions. You know, at MABE, we are about, all about local governance. And it's nice to be able to have a forum for you to hear what we have to say at the local level. So thank you all very much this morning for having us.
MABE is our partner and really helped us tremendously in getting these sessions scheduled. Let me just quickly go down the list of our participants with Allegheny County. That would be Crystal and Robert.
Yes, is Crystal on?
I'm here. Are we introducing ourselves or are you just taking attendance?
Yeah, just briefly introducing yourselves.
Okay. My name is Crystal Bender. I am the president of the Board of Education for Allegheny County. This is my second year in that role, and I was first elected in 2020, 2021 during COVID. So I've been here for the most controversial time yet.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, my name is Bob Farrell. I was president my first year I was elected, and I have been vice president under Crystal for the last two years. And we work very, very, very well together. And I enjoy being here. I enjoy the input and whatever we can learn. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We go to Cecil. That's Diana and Christie.
Good afternoon, I guess. It was morning. I'm Diana Hawley. I am the board president for Cecil County, and I'm also a member of the MABE Board of Directors. And Cecil is well represented here today. We're clearly appreciating this opportunity. So we'll go.
I'm Diane Heath. I'm a member of Cecil County Board of Education and just here, excited to hear what everyone has to say.
Thank you.
And I'm Kristy Stevens, Vice President of the Cecil County Board of Education.
Great. Welcome. And go to Charles. That's Michael and Tina.
Good morning, everybody, or good afternoon, apologize. Mike Lucas, I'm the chairperson of the Charles County Board of Education. This is my third term on the board. And I also serve on the Legislative Committee at MABE, and I appreciate this opportunity that we all can get together to have a successful implementation of the blueprint. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tina Wilson. I'm the vice chairperson. This is my first term as a school board member, and I'm delighted to be here to engage in the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. And from St. Mary's, Karen and Kathy?
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Bailey. I was first elected in 2014 and have held the position of board chairperson since. So I'm completing my seventh year on the board. And I also serve on the subcabinet for the Maryland Center for School Safety.
Excellent. Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Allen. I am the vice chair of the board in St. Mary's County. I am a, charitably a veteran board member, having first been elected in 2000 and being fortunate enough to be continually reelected since that time. I'm also a past president of MABE and very active on a number of, not only MABE committees, but also statewide committees. I serve on the state committee to, for the advancement of, of school-based health centers. And I do so on behalf of MABE.
Thank you. Thank you. And Frederick County, that's Karen.
Good afternoon. Karen Yoho. I'm completing my first term on Frederick County Board of Ed. I was a teacher in the system for 25 years before that, elementary. And I'm on the MABE Board of Directors. I'm the chair of the Legislative Committee for MABE. I'm the liaison for MABE to the PSTAB, Professional Standards and Teacher Education Board. And I just realized I need to contact somebody because I've been representing MABE on the committee that selects the teacher of the year, and I haven't gotten any information lately. So very involved with MABE and the school system and appreciate the opportunity for us to all get together today.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. And Tammy?
Hello, I'm Tammy Freely. I'm the immediate past president of MABE, and I also serve on the Allegheny County Board of Education in my second term, so six years in. And I've also served with MABE in those entire six years on their Board of Directors. And I look forward to hearing everybody and being able to share information, especially in this virtual format. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. And then Michelle from Anaronda County, also with MABE.
Good morning, Michelle Corkindell. I serve as MABE's treasurer, as an officer, and have served on a Board of Directors Equity Committee, Legislative Committee as well. And locally, I'm with the Anaronda County. And I am a past president and sit on several committees and chair a couple, too.
We understand about that, yes.
Yes. I won't bore everybody with what they are.
All right. Well, again, we're very interested. Our goal is to listen and to learn. So as we go through the questions, again, if we don't get to everyone, please put something in the chat or send us a note. We want to, this is starting a conversation. We're open to, at your invitation, if you think it'd be worthwhile to come out and visit, take part in a local board meeting, if you think that's, that's useful. We're also considering the idea of maybe trying to host one or two remote state board meetings. We would host them at a local, at a local board. If someone would have us. I don't know if anyone would actually have us come out, but if, if so, we would even come out, be willing to do that, going to try something like that once or twice a year. But to just get out and to listen and to learn. So the first question is, how is the state board doing? And what are we doing well and what needs to be improved? Please be candid. We need to hear it. And then from that, then we can then make adjustments and move on. So we have a number of people. So anyone that wishes to jump in with that first response? How are we doing? Yes, Jenny?
Well, I did respond that I would, would answer this question, number one. First of all, I'd just like to say that I'm absolutely thrilled that we have a strategic plan. I think it's really critically important for our stakeholders to know where we are, where we are going, and to be able to track, you know, measurable progress. I think it's also important that, and like the fact that there was an opportunity for some stakeholder input into the plan. However, I would like to say that, to my knowledge, it was not published as well as it could have been in my county regarding stakeholder input. I did make, at my, when I knew about it, I made an announcement at the board meeting that we wanted to solicit, solicit community input and gave the website information. But I think for something that's so important, it needed to be almost an overload of requests for people to participate so that you could totally get a flavor for the state. We're a very diverse state with very diverse perspectives. And I think that it's essential that all of the areas are heard from. In the same vein, I think the roundtables, I have been able to participate. Now, this is my second one. The first was on masks. A great opportunity for state board to touch base with the locals. But also, I would like to see more of them, maybe on an ongoing basis. As well, I would like to see some targeted ones. Because we are so diverse and we have different needs that perhaps a Southern Maryland one or a Western Maryland roundtable to talk with them about, you know, what their needs are specifically on an ongoing basis might be helpful as well. Communication always is, can always be improved, we'll put it that way, in, on all levels. So whatever can be done to keep us informed on a timely basis would be much appreciated. There are so many outlets now through social media, TV. And for those of us that still have newspapers, you know, saturate us once again with information because the more knowledge we have, the more we can better understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I can jump in.
I think I see Crystal and then say Karen, so we'll go there. And then Michelle.
I kind of want to echo what Jenny said with communication. Now, I'm only in my second year, so I don't know if it's normal or just been different the last two years. But most of what I see comes directly from MABE. I don't really see a lot of communication directly from MSD or from the state board. And maybe that's normal, that I know MABE is there for that reason. But I do think there could probably be a little more information coming directly. Or you're channeling it through the superintendent's office, which is probably accurate. But for us to give feedback, I don't see a lot directly from the state. It's coming from MABE.
Okay, okay. Absolutely. So is that Karen? I think you could.
Yes.
And then Michelle.
Yes, I mean, I completely agree. I think, I mean, communication is paramount in, you know, making this whole educational system in the state work effectively. I also think that, and I'm going to use the example, when we were coming out of the pandemic with the, you know, with the state testing that had to be done, you know, I think in March, April, May, after we had, you know, some students who were just coming back into the classroom and it was going to take up instructional time. I'm very happy that, you know, that you guys kind of opened the doors and allowed, you know, board members and MABE and parents to, you know, to, to talk to you about, about that decision. And then, you know, you revisited it. I think, I think that is very important because sometimes at the local level, and I know it happens even on our board with, you know, dealing with our own local students and parents, you know, we're not always aware of what's happening in our schools. And I think, you know, sometimes the feeling is out there that maybe the state board doesn't see what's happening in our schools as well, especially since we have such a diverse county group, right? Like what happens in Prince George's, Montgomery, Baltimore County is sometimes completely different than what happens in, you know, your outlying counties and your more rural counties. So sometimes a, you know, one-size-fits-all approach doesn't necessarily always, you know, make sense. I understand the intent of it, that everyone needs to be held to the same standards. But I, I would like to have, you know, the ability for the locals and/or the local superintendents to work within those guidelines in order to, you know, make it fit better, quote unquote, for our school systems.
Yeah, thank you.
If I could just chime in very quickly, in the past, years ago, the state board of education would meet for dinner with the MABE Board of Directors. And the invitation was also extended to board chairs and vice chairs to join so that we could have sort of an informal program, conversation, face-to-face. And it was very effective in helping the state board understand more about how MABE functioned as well as local boards. And for the state board to then offer up more, more information at a more granular level about how they function, the processes that they use. And we found that to be very effective. And unfortunately, there were some decisions about, from MSD, about discontinuing that. I would love to see us go back to that because I found it to be very effective and very helpful in getting to know each other and, and to open those lines of communication very, very well.
Okay, okay. All right. That sounds good. We'll definitely look at that. Absolutely. Michelle?
Thank you. So I will just echo a little bit of some of my colleagues as it relates to communication. And I think specifically that direct communication to local board members, I think makes them feel like they have a tether. And so as we continue to, to, you know, face recovery, because we are now in recovery of our emergency, I think the re-establishment of a healthy relationship and to build on that would go a long way. I think when the state board works directly with the superintendent, the local superintendents, that's great operationally. But it can leave local member, board members in particular, perhaps not seeing what they need to see. And I always think that the state board could provide that focus to help the local boards as they make the decisions or figure out how to implement what the state board has. And I think as we move into the AIB model, that is going to be even more critical that we have a seat at the table. I think the state board had, you know, the reboot, reset button that you and our new state superintendent, Sir Shodri, has, has done, has created new energy and a new approach, trickling down to the local level. So now the implementation, as you guys go through it, I, I think there's an opportunity there for us to also tell our constituents, which are your constituents, that we are well-informed in making our decisions. And that will go a long way to rebuilding up the trust, which I believe just about every district is struggling as it relates to their students, their constituency, and their staff because recovery is not fun and there's a lot of bumps in the road. So we need to re-establish that trust. I think overall, Kerwin does a very effective job of guiding us as to where we need to be. And I think the state board is doing a good job in the reach out to the affected stakeholders thus far. I do think we could build on that success in the following upcoming months and years ahead and seize some of the opportunities that we may not have had this last past year.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're going to, you're going to see a lot more of the outreach with the strategic plan, getting your input and suggestions about implementation because we recognize, number one, we can't do it alone. And number two, we don't have all the information. We need you. We need you. And that's what we're going to try to do. Karen?
Thank you. Nothing really specifically new to add, but just, just a reminder. I know as a classroom teacher, I would do curriculum writing. I did that for about 10 years. And we would come up with what we thought were wonderful ideas. And as soon as we put it in front of the students, we realized where we had gone drastically wrong and redo, redo. And so I think, you know, if any of us gets in our ivory towers, I, I love that Mr. Shodri follows a student. I think that's quite unique and, and an excellent way to really get immersed in what is going on. But we have to always, we're all here for the students. We all care about students. We care about being good, you know, tenders of the taxpayer dollars and, but staying out of our ivory towers and, and getting as much feedback and information and seeking it out. We have a lot of parents who, we hear from the loud ones, the ones that know how to get involved. We don't hear from the quiet ones sitting in the back corner. So we need to, to try to seek that out any way we can. So I appreciate these kind of opportunities and keep them coming. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. If there are no other comments along the lines, again, as you think about things, please feel free to send it to, send them to us and at any time you have questions or concerns or whatever. Please just pick up the phone and call me or Chip. And we're going to be looking at how we can maybe talk to our board about maybe having a, a board member designated by region or by school system so that you have a point of contact. We take all this very seriously. The second question is, what can we do to help? Is there something else?
Yeah, I just, I just have one more comment. Um, I just, I wanted, I just want to thank Mr. Shodri, and I know Michelle Corkindell alluded to it, for the advocacy that he has done for the school systems in front of the legislature, in front of AIB. I think that sometimes over the past several years, that was a piece that we might have felt, or at least I felt was missing, you know, from MSD and the state board. And, you know, I've been in several room, hearing rooms, you know, listening to him speak and advocate for us. And, and I think that to the extent that that can continue, you know, for us as we move through Kerwin and see what the, you know, with the AIB and how that takes shape, I think, I, I think would be tremendous. I mean, that's my personal opinion. And I think Kathy feels the same way. I don't know about any of the other counties, but, you know, I'm definitely on board with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we are leaning forward, working with the AIB. We, we're developing a very Thank you. Yes, we are leaning forward, working with the AIB. We we're developing a very effective relationship. I had lunch a week ago with the chair of the AIB, I think. Superintendent, you had lunch yesterday? Was it yesterday?
I'm forgetting, I don't remember my days now sometimes. So, yes, I think it was yesterday, yes. Cause yesterday was our uh official day off, but yes, but uh I make it a thing to uh engage, you know, um, them as well. And like you said, you know, it's an amazing piece of legislation, but um, you know, to echo kind of like a lesson plan, but then you go to do it and you're like, oh my gosh, we missed so many things. And so, you know, it's an amazing piece of legislation. We're in the blueprint uh generation, no doubt, but you gotta refine it as you go. While also have some level of customization per region, right? Like there's big differences between, you know, uh, parts of the shore and the core and the advantages and disadvantages and how that all plays out. So advocacy is very important um to to get it right. So, thank you.
So we're leaning very, very much forward. We have a s- a committee that's working with them. We're hoping to have a joint uh, a meeting of the two boards by no later than early fall. We're looking to see if we can do it during the summer. But we're having a lot of conversations, and our goal is to educate children, reduce the amount of bureaucracy, and figure out how the two boards can work effectively uh for the benefit of our children. So from your perspective, what can we do to help you be successful? What can we do to help you? What 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 would be useful? What can we do to to make your lives a little bit better, help you carry out your mission? You have a great mission. Guys are doing a great job. What can we do to help you? Anyone? Yes, Diana?
I'll, I'll go ahead and take a stab at this one. Um, I think making sure there's consistency. Um, I think um, one of my concerns with um the blueprint is that what the AIB has the authority. But I think it's really important to ensure that, as you said, this effective communication is happening between the AIB, the MSD and state board, and then the local school systems regarding the implementation of it. It's the blueprint's really complex as we've all um learned. And I just think making sure everyone is on the same page and getting the same communication is is crucial.
Yes. Okay. Alrighty. Any other comments about what we can do? Is that Tina?
Yes, sir. Uh, I would say that if there's any information or data or results that come from the state, that they are provided to the counties in enough time to um react and prepare. I can't provide any specifics, but I know that in the past, there's been challenges where um, uh, data was presented late, and so it's kind of hard for the jurisdictions to kind of prepare and then get in into um execution mode and get ready for the school year. Um, and and I know it takes a lot to compile. Um, I know that it it takes time to analyze and to validate, but just be mindful that the end user needs appropriate amount of time to be able to, um, you know, prepare, you know, in in the schools. I mean, it ultimately, we're we're focused on student outcomes. But the teachers need the information um and to be familiar with it in order to help the students.
Absolutely.
I I can, I can comment on that, just the very fresh on my mind. So, um, absolutely, um, you know, Maryland is still not at a place where it's releasing the assessment results um, well before even the summer comes along. So, we're moving towards that, and I'm going to accelerate that. Um, I'm used to that um when I was in Texas and and other places. Um, and so we should be able to get that, you know, this was the, so we're kind of in a weird, um, right before the pandemic, there was a shift from Park to MCAP. Right, right before the pandemic. So you you you've heard of that shift, then the pandemic hit. And then we didn't really give a full version of MCAP. This fall, we gave a modified version of it for last spring. And then this spring, we did the full version for the first time. Um, and so you have to do something called standard setting. So you have to say, you know, what is proficiency, what is, you know, below basic, et cetera. So we're in this standard setting space, um, and so that's gonna cause the delay for this here. But I can assure you going forward, you know, we have shifted to computer um adaptive testing now, right? Uh, that was a big shift. And so it will feel like once we get out of this funky uh year this year where you would get it immediately. Um, so after you you take it, you you shoot the data back to the system. Definitely get it well before the summer rolls out. That's where we need to get to. And so I hear you, and I really appreciate that comment, because that resonated with me, because I was like with my team, what do you mean, I can't see it yet, like? I I need to see it. And so uh, they drove me crazy too, but it it's just the way Maryland timed the shift from Park to MCAP pandemic, modified version, full version, and here we are. So we'll get there, I assure you, but it is a priority of mine, because otherwise it doesn't mean anything. It's too late. Um, so I I got you on that.
Thank you. Um, Michelle?
Thank you. Um, so I I think that some of the ways I I believe would be helpful for at least some of our districts is, you know, we have new leadership at the superintendent level. And there's quite a few of them um coming in July one and a few transitioning out. I'm wondering if there's something that MSD can do to help them onboard. We can only take it so far. And a critical role, um particularly with the launching of the blueprint, is going to be um, them having the successful relationships. And so it would be helpful if the state board could take perhaps some initiative and leadership in that capacity, um, as it relates to acclimating them to uh what the expectations are and moving forward. I think also, um as it relates to um state board and the relationship that they're going to have with the AIB, it, I think it would also be very helpful for the districts as some of this is enrolling to to get some feedback opportunities. Um, with the leadership team, just like this, with our presidents and our vice presidents and with MAB leadership um, in at each of those criticals. Um, and that starts by us being well informed of when the AIB is working and what that means to us and our relationship with with all of you. Um, because as the pandemic, I believe, proved um, how we translate those relationships when we have to flip on a dime is is critical. And um, I think I I would prefer not to have to relive some of the hunting down of information and the timeliness of it um, when we have those criticals. And then lastly, I have on my list is um agency relationships. Department, getting the Department of Health information disseminated, uh when we had um state delegations of ours receiving information relevant to health education uh before we are. Um, I think maybe the state board could act on our behalf and try to see if there's some relationships there that we could unsnag some of the information when we are in a critical state.
Correct.
Or or in a state of emergency, or even just in general, you know, uh, major events that are happening and initiatives.
Sure, absolutely.
Just one thing on the new superintendents. Yes, one of the things as I end my first year, didn't expect to fail uh seven, eight, nine vacancies on superintendents, but it's also exciting too. I'm excited for Dr. Bedell um, and 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 you're uh and him coming on board. I can assure you, I've spent at least one hour with each one of them just to uh get to know them, and I will continue to do that um and spend time with them, but absolutely on the blueprint. Um, one of the most complex things that you will all be taking on is this career ladder, right? Uh, don't forget, ultimately, it has to be negotiated and then adopted by you at the local level. You have to move to sixty thousand starting. Plus this complexity on a career ladder where you have teachers teaching part-time, so how do you fill that other half of the time that they would have been kids with? So it's gonna be a complex one. That is one that is top of mind for me with the AIB. Cause we need to, I'm gonna say go slow to go fast on that one, because we gotta get that right. Um, obviously, it's overdue to be the most competitive pay structure in the country. We needed, we import fifty percent of our teachers, and that's not gonna change overnight. Um, uh, most of our high school students, less and less are becoming interested in becoming teaching. Frankly, we need like a statewide strategy on that. And so know that that's top of mind for me. And so, but that is one of the key blueprint things that is just gonna shape everything. And it's gonna be one of your big responsibilities to adopt that is forthcoming. And so we really need to get that one right. So I appreciate you just kind of hitting on just, you know, keeping everyone acclimated and swimming towards the the vision uh together. Um, so thank you.
And and I would just say that on the the leadership piece, that's something that we're beginning to focus a bit more on with the state board. These reforms are not going to occur in a vacuum. So supporting the local superintendents, the principals and supporting you as you support them is gonna be absolutely critical. In fact, we have at our board meeting coming up on Tuesday, we have the uh secondary and elementary school principals association representatives coming in to talk to us. Cause we wanna make sure here that we hear them and uh, and that we are supporting our leaders. It's great to have certified teachers. I think that's incredibly important. My background is government and business. I've yet to see a suc- this successful transformation take place if the leadership isn't on board. So getting the leadership on board, supporting that is is absolutely critical um, to make this work. Um, is there anything else that we can do to help you? Yes, Tina?
So, um, this is probably the only opportunity that I will probably be able to ask our state superintendent. Um, and this is, this is a journey for me for eight eight years. Um, so this is my first term as a board member. And I previously served as the education chair of the local branch of the NAACP. Um, and this is in terms of, in context of of recruiting and retaining African American uh teachers. I went, uh, I attended an HBCU. There's four HBCUs in the state of Maryland. As you mentioned before, we are an import state. Um, it's a question that I asked the previous state superintendent and I'll ask you, have you had the opportunity to talk to Maryland state universities and colleges that have education programs? Um, is there a willingness? Are are they receptive? Um, and have you've had conversations about not only minority recruitment, but student teaching, expanding uh student teaching um, and expanding classroom management? Because whether they're an import or export uh recruit, there seems to be um, differences in terms of experiences and opportunities before they get into um the classroom. Um, I I am on the board of visitors for the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. Uh, because I kind of stuck up the place several years ago, um, when I found out that the recruit uh recruiting class was eight in one, one year, and then four this year. Um, you cannot um continue to have an education program with four seniors in the program. And we do have special education, um, and we're now in partnership with Salisbury University. Um, so I was wondering, have you given any thought, discussion?
Absolutely. So, um, I am really excited about that question. You're talking to someone who oversee HR, uh oversight HR divisions in the districts I worked at at Texas. So, uh, this is a issue that is near and dear to me. I think we um, the strategy is a long game. Um, ultimately, it it truly is, because it's, we gotta tap into our students, right? Our students are the future face of Maryland. Um, and and it and it's, you know, and obviously in the short term, we gotta convince a lot of people to move to our state to be teachers here, right? You gotta be competitive. Um, one of the things that um I did early on, and I would ask that you ask um uh Maria uh about their Maryland Leeds Grant Proposal they submitted, um, and they got approved for. I prioritize the grow your own, um, and grow your own initiatives, and pretty much all of you, all of your counties here uh, the that's sitting in this room rose to the challenge to create a pipeline in collaboration with and a university of future teaching assistants and future TAs becoming teachers and students becoming teachers. And so in a very thoughtful way, because grow, you know, we have these uh um programs, uh, the the but you have to really uh take a cohort model, you have to try to subsidize debt as much as possible. You have to follow them through into college. You guarantee if you come back a job, if you commit for three years, you know, you could help pay for their debt. Like, you gotta really design it. And you gotta have a great induction experience, right? Cause once you're in, you gotta keep them. So really asked for a thoughtful approach and plan, and um, and it was a very rigorous process. And so I would ask you to ask your superintendent how that plan is going and kicking off. So yes, and it is explicitly designed to not only tackle uh future shortage issues, but also the diversity challenge as well. Um, and not just for teachers, but also for administrators, also for um, you know, future teaching assistants, because teaching assistants are some of your best pools to tap into to possibly become future teachers. And so those kinds of things. So yes, I have had conversations. I'm also making my rounds around the universities. I've I've been at Coppin, I've been at Morgan State, I'm about to go to the shore in a couple of weeks and meet with the president. And so it is on my list of people to speak to, and every possible opportunity I can get. We don't have in our state a recurring pot of money that commits to these kind of pipeline initiatives. They've been done as one-offs. Um, and I'm using the federal status set set aside to like really send a message. And this coming legislative session and any other ones until they, until I convince them to pass it, I want a state pot dedicated exactly on this issue, and diversifying. Other states have done that. Texas has done that. And so I'm with you. We also need to get flexible in how people get prepared. A lot of our candidates get caught up in licensure exams or are not able to cross that line. So we have to really be supportive of how we get them there, and it can't just be one way. Uh, what, uh, you know, when I was at St. Mary's, um, the superintendent, I were having a conversation. We wanna, as we raise the rigor and elevate the profession, we wanna be careful that the funnel for entry doesn't become so tight that you are only getting droplets of 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 quality. I'd rather have a wider funnel of entry and then ensure rigor in the first three years of their of their career. And then decide whether or not they can continue to be an amazing teacher beyond that induction and that probationary period. And so that's my philosophy on that. And so that's how I would love to go about that. So, yes, I have been in conversations. Um, I'll tell you, one of the things that's priority for me is literacy. Our universities are on all not preparing our teachers properly around literacy, and I am going to make that a priority. I know Cecil knows that. They 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 committed so much, they went to Delaware to go get their literacy plan for that. And so I am going to make sure that that's also a priority as well, because our teachers need to come in not only on classroom management, but also how do uh, we all know, if they're not reading by third grade, it gets harder and harder and harder. That is our first attempt to narrow the gap, and we gotta get that right. I'll just stop there because uh uh parents, parents knows I can go on and so I'm gonna let.
Excellent, excellent. Um, Sean, uh, Kevin, any um, any comments, anything so far as listen? Kevin is uh.
I have a comment. I'm really impressed with um Diana Holly and Diana Heath's um interpretation of the blueprint and the need to coordinate and collaborate with the AIB. And it seems as though they're taking initiative to understand the relationship so that we can best address their needs as a county. And uh, we're working on that proactively. Um, Clarence and Mohammed and Dale have been proactively working on that to strategize how we could be more effective or most effective as a board in this new relationship that's been created by the blueprint and uh your attention and understanding of it and bringing it to the forefront uh of our attention is. And, uh, your attention and understanding of it and bringing it to the forefront of our attention is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Kevin is, this is his last month. He graduated a few days ago, so he's getting ready to head off to college.
Yeah. But just over the conversation, just hearing a lot about the relationship with the blueprint and how essential leader formation communication can always be improved. Um, the blueprint is something that requires extreme fidelity and implementation. And which is so essential why we have these conversations. So we can talk about some of these like minor like uses or some of these areas for improvement or what are we doing right? So I just love hearing that. And also just love taking notes to see how can we like actually make these like talking points? Not just stay talking points, but be implemented and succeed because it benefits everyone.
Okay. If there are no other questions, want to move to the third one, which is really around how do we come together? As Maryland to, to implement the strategy and, and the, uh, blueprint. And to really think about this, you know, uh, about a month or so ago, we found a report to the general assembly from nineteen sixteen. It's a report that was commissioned by the general assembly. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss someone from the second com question? Let's go to, uh, Mike and then to, uh, Emmy.
So I'm on the third question.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. Be right there with you. So we,
So was I.
Okay, great. We'll come right to you. We saw this, uh, report of, to the general assembly that they had commissioned in nineteen sixteen. Many of the things that we're dealing with today were identified in nineteen sixteen. We've had a number of different initiatives over the years that have met with some success, but have not met with full success. With the state board, we have, we know that we cannot do it. You guys are the ones on the front line, but from our perspective, we want to draw a line that says enough is enough. Let's begin to figure out how we get this done. This is not going to be easy. If it were easy, it would have been solved years ago. We have to harder, when you look at, I'm most familiar with transformation. One of the most challenging things about transformation is can you stay, can you stay focused? Can you stay focused on the big issues, not get trapped in all of these other issues, but stay focused? The second area is engagement. Can you engage the right stakeholders? In a meaningful way to get their buy-in? The third part is can you do these things over an extended period of time? We're looking at probably seven to 10 years. So how do we come together to do this? And we know that we don't have all the answers. We know that we cannot do it alone. But we believe, you know, and I'll just mention this. The vast majority of these strategic, uh, transformation initiatives fail. Just like sixty, seventy percent or more fail. And this goes back for fifty years. So if you were just the outside, you just thought on the outside and you looked at what we're proposing, the smart money would bet that we will fail as well. But that's not the case. Being realistic about what we have to do and then coming together and staying focused as a team. Yes, we got to res- respect our various responsibilities. But coming together as a team with a commitment that says we have drawn a line. We are going to get this done this time. We got the right people. We're having the right conversations. So the challenge then becomes how do we do this? And how do we do this over an extended period of time? So again, this was the first of a series of conversations. You're going to see a whole lot more on engagement coming up in, in the coming months. But we have to, we have to own this on behalf of our children and we've got to be able to figure it out. We've got to be able to speak candidly to each other and talk about what's working, what's not working and do it in a constructive way. And keep our focus on the important things and not get trapped in some of these other matters that don't matter one bit. That's, that's one of the biggest challenges with, with major initiatives is you get pulled away and stuff that at the end of the day doesn't matter. So I want to go to Mike and, uh, who was, and Tammy, we'll start with you. Mike?
Hi, thanks. And so I had a couple of points on the third question and, and you know, we've kind of alluded to them, um, already. But the, the first would be, you know, we all have a number of reporting requirements. And it would be good if there was, you know, a single plan that L E A's, all the L E A's could use, um, to show, um, the components of, of reporting requirements for the strategic plan, the blueprint, plan, anything else that, that M S D requests regarding the blueprint. And that way, um, it's as succinct as possible. And, and you know, everyone is, we're not just twenty-six people stovepipe doing what we think is right. So I think that's, that's very important. Um, the other thing is regular meetings between superintendents and blueprint implementation coordinators. Something that could be facilitated with the ZAM and M S D. And, um, members of the A I B could attend as well. But you know, those blueprint coordinators, they're, they're the ones doing a lot of the legwork. And so being able to share that information and having superintendents hear it from them, um, vice and other level up, I, I think really could, could help folks hone down on the fidelity that's required to that reporting that I mentioned before. And, and then finally, just regular updates by state boards, by the state board and it, L E A's on the progress of the blueprint, just so that we're, um, not only transparent, but, but we're, we're giving the community, an up check on, on where we are with regard to blueprint implementation. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mike. Tammy?
Um, much like you were saying of transforming. I know that I was president of my board at the time when COVID actually hit. And we were all surprised, right? And, and we all weren't ready for that change. Um, I think at this point we have a chance to be ready. And I think that the communicate, being ready means communicating and using all platforms for communication. Uh, I said, when I was, uh, made president and I was in Western Maryland, you know, I was gonna have to travel downstate and thank goodness I didn't. Um, because a lot of times there's people that can't get to where you want them to be. Um, whether it be weather from Western Maryland or just distance from Eastern Shore. Um, I think if we can continue these types of communications where it allows, um, virtual, but being able to see each other's faces using Zoom or having some, um, I think it was Kathy that said, uh, those informal sessions where you can go and, and have dinner. Um, because that is something that's going to be very helpful. Um, and gets people out of their comfort zone in a sense that you're just sitting around talking about, uh, you know, your day, but you can have those conversations and not feel intimidated. Um, some people don't like to be on camera. Some people wouldn't want to be on YouTube Live right now, right? Um, and so I think that you, you just have to use all forms of communication. And, um, the other thing for me, I think is that you need to make sure that there is a communication channel and that you don't always rely on it working a hundred percent correctly, because it doesn't. Like if you think you're talking to a superintendent and that superintendent is going to get things down to the lowest level, it doesn't always happen because they have different priorities. Or they may just be busy because they're working on some other issue. So if there's something where you're wanting to get local input, um, and you, you, like you said at the beginning, you utilize M A B for a lot of that because that's, M A B has those communication channels. But at the same time, um, over communicating, like Jeannie said at the very beginning, just, you know, blast it to all of us. Um, because I think that will help, um, in that you'll get some responses back. But having a way to be, um, uniform in those responses, which I think Mike was just talking about, some way to where we could all see all twenty-six counties, quote unquote, responses at the same time. I, COVID was a really good example of where you had to go search and find what was happening in all twenty-six counties. And those that are part of M A B will know that, you know, I created a spreadsheet and we all pulled it up and we all were trying to figure out who was doing what, where, and you know, who was going back to school on what day even for that matter, right? I mean, something as simple as knowing what each county's, uh, calendars are without having to go to twenty-six or, you know, twenty-four different places to find them, right? So that type of information at a state level is helpful to just share what everybody else is doing. And that's something that I think M A B was trying to work on too. Um, as well though, at the state level is having a place to see what everybody else is doing. I think would be helpful.
Very good. Thank you. We have Michelle and then Jenny.
Thanks. Um, I just want to build on what a couple of other people already said very well. Um, and maybe expand that a little bit in a parallel way. One of the challenges that I'm seeing as we are starting to pick through the details of, uh, the, the Kerwin Plan, digging into what is the strategic plan need to be at the local level? Making sure it's, you know, paired up with the state's initiatives. Um, there seems to be different, um, information interpretations. And we know that that's going to naturally occur. But one of the challenges has been even for our members, especially when we're dealing with staff, um, particularly with M E A, um, our teachers. And I think some, a group that may be a little forgotten, but is going to be absolutely critical in our success. And that's A E L, AKA our principals and admin, um, school administrators, A P's and such. PZAM likewise, and to a much lesser degree, M A K O, but, um, and M A B, our ability to connect and make sure that the messaging is consistent. I know when, when you mentioned that, um, you know, we're going to have to negotiate this career ladder. Well, that's going to start, that has to start with making sure that our teachers and our principals are all engaged in that and have the same message that we do. And so, for example, some of the bonus structures for certifications, as we've been working through that, and you guys are fully aware that those are one of the challenges, the A I B and yourselves, um, as a team will be taking on. Um, the information that M E A, for example, is saying that they're receiving from you guys and from others seems to not necessarily be in a hundred percent alignment of what we hear from our superintendents as well as hear ourselves. And so I think we would have more success if we could maybe convene those core groups periodically and make sure we're talking the same language. Because if you recall, these are some of the groups that were part of the, um, the, the scripting of our blueprint and have played an instrumental role. We don't get that feedback, uh, we get a filtered version of it, if that makes sense. And, um, the pandemic, I think, just to put it to relations. Um, for example, um, our, our teachers, um, in our district at least, had, um, a more direct seat at the table through their, um, union membership than they did work, than the board did, this, our, our local school board. So we didn't have those, we don't always get those seats at the table, I guess, be another way of putting it. And so when we have pieces of our people at the table, our ability to make sure that that accurate, consistent information is channeling and disseminating, I think will be critical, um, for implementation of some of our strategies as well as the blueprint.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. I just have, uh, more of a comment on something that you said earlier, Clarence. And that is can we stay focused? Because, um, I've had the experience of being in the school system. I retired from the school system in Maryland, uh, after twenty-five years of service. And I, there were many programs that came and went. And we, I thought we were on the right path. Um, Maryland was number one in the nation and then something happened. What happened to take us, you know, to stray, for us to stray and our focus to wane? So we have an excellent opportunity right now, as you said earlier, to get the right people in place. And I do think we are heading in that direction to stay focused, um, on, on the end goal and not give up when the, you know, when it, the top, when it really gets tough. Um, because those are hurdles we need to overcome to get us to that prize. So just a comment.
Okay, thank you. And then we have, uh, Karen and Kathy.
I, I will certainly echo the, the focus piece. In nineteen sixty-five, my father went to a P T A meeting at which he was told that, um, they, the school was going to yet again be, um, making some changes to the educational program. Um, and this is something for the elementary school my father had heard year after year. And so he finally raised his hand and asked what was going to happen to his daughter Kathy? When at the end of her high school career, everything had changed year after year. And, um, and there was no consistency and she wasn't going to be successful. Who was going to pay to, um, take care of her? Uh, thankfully I seem to have managed on my own. Um, I will say that with respect to, um, uh, the, uh, Kerwin Commission, um, there were a lot of voices, certainly coming from representatives from M A B as a part of that, who were trying to raise the issue of, um, while the academic conversation of how to do things was, um, you know, certainly helpful and interesting, uh, that the implementation was going to be lacking because, um, the commission did not seem to be interested in understanding, um, the academic exercise of actually applying those concepts to reality. Um, and that is, is an ongoing issue. Um, Superintendent Treasury, I was very pleased to hear that, um, you had the conversation with Dr. Smith that you don't, you, you want to expand the, the funnel and not narrow it. Um, I certainly am concerned about the idea of no longer offering reciprocity, as least as I understand it, to teachers coming from other states. And that bringing them here, if they're going to come here, they're going to have to come in as provisionals until they can prove, um, that they are worthy. And that's, that's going to affect coming from a military community here in St. Mary's, um, as, as well as, as Anna Rendell and other places where we have military spouses coming here for several years. They're very effective teachers and yet they're not going to want to work in the system as a provisional when they can go to Pax River and get a very well-paying job. Um, and, uh, and, and be effective in what they're doing. But the, the people who are going to lose out are our children. And I want to make sure that as some of these concepts coming forward from the Kerwin Commission and now the A I B, that, um, and forgive me, but I'm just gonna, um, I think I'm going to be blunt about this. Um, don't give us lip service and say, yeah, yeah, we hear you. Um, without giving us a real meaningful opportunity to say, all right, I hear what you, what you're proposing, but this is what it would look like in trying to implement that in our schools. We can't do it that way, but let's together figure out a way to come to the end goal, but perhaps by taking a different path. That has not happened with Kerwin. I am asking you please to let this happen, um, as we move forward with the blueprint. Um, we're struggling enough to explain to people in our community, in our community who are thrilled about the blueprint, that what they're hearing, what they're taking away from some of the advocacy organizations, um, is, is not going to play out in St. Mary's because the funding for us is not there because of the way the, this legislation was written. Um, and so, you know, they're seeing all the bells and whistles and oh, it's wonderful. There's all this money coming in? No, there's not. Um, we are going to do our best to implement these things. We have a high level of accountability with respect to academics and, and fiscal accountability. But, um, the challenge is helping everyone else understand that. And so, um, The challenge is helping everyone else understand that. And so, um. Please just. Uh, I really do appreciate this conversation. Um, and I'm appreciative of the fact that you're looking at continuing these conversations. Um, I want to make sure that um, there are meaningful outcomes and deliverables from this conversation.
Absolutely. In fact, on the um. I think it's almost impossible to, to pass a piece of legislation, no matter how well conceived as, as an implementation document. So what we're. Working on right now with the strategy is the implementation to address some of the. Things you talked about and, and we've had conversations with the leadership. Of the AIB, so they understand and we're going to have to make some adjustments. As we go down the pike, they're open to hearing what needs to get done. Um, so we're, we're working that, we understand that. Um, there's going to have to be changes along the way. To make this work and come to life for our children. And you are absolutely correct as we look at this. This is not just a. An initiative for children who are in school today. We're talking about impacting people for a lifetime. So we've got to get it right. We've got to get it right so that. We can have generations of our children. Exit our system as, and be as successful as possible. Uh, post uh, grade twelve. So I think that is the exact right focus and we are having those conversations. With the AIB and it's going to be an ongoing conversation. They are open to hearing it. And uh, so part of that will be, we're going to be addressing some of those issues in the strategy, sort of the how to. Legislation says this. And the strategy will help us then figure out, okay, how do we actually do it? What are the timelines? And, and with the strategy, a major part of our success. Is going to be our ability to communicate and work with folks just like you to figure this out. And to do what makes sense for Maryland. Chip?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a couple of observations that, that uh. Have been raised by uh, the, the local board. Uh, representatives today and uh, several key, key words. Uh, that I think all of us will take back. From the conversation, much of it is around communication and how important uh, communication is. Uh, between us. Um, relationships are critical. Relationship building, I think, is particularly important. Uh, between our state board and our local boards. And I think we have room for improvement and a number of. Suggestions as to how we can. Build our relationships to even be stronger uh, than they are. And staying focused, I think, is another. Um, key message from our conversation. Uh, there's nothing more important than to get the mission right and to stay focused on it and not distracted. So that we don't wait another hundred years and find that the same issues are before us now. As they were more than a hundred years ago. I think we've come through some really challenging times um, in the education environment. Certainly the pandemic has added uh, lots of new challenges for us, but I come away. Really feeling encouraged about the opportunities that are in front of us. And I think we have incredible opportunities. It's almost like the perfect storm. Uh, we have a transformational uh, state superintendent. Uh, he's very. Energized about the mission uh, that all of us uh, want to see succeed. We have a blueprint that lays out some incredible challenges for us and yet at the same time. There's an opportunity for us to have a world-class education for every student in our state. And that's an incredible opportunity. Uh, it won't be easy. There will be lots of heavy lifts, but if we stay focused. Uh. On seeing that that goal is met. Uh, we have a strategic plan in the works that I hope all of the local boards will feel. Yes, I've heard about it, but more importantly, I'm invested. In the strategic plan. Because I want. To feel ownership. I want to be uh, a part of the success. In the implementation of that plan because the local boards. Have to feel ownership. You and this, and the local superintendents are going to implement this plan. And if you don't feel you have been engaged and had opportunity to own it. And say, yes, I like it. I want to see it succeed for the kids of Maryland. That's, that's the opportunity we have and. Um, I think we have an energized state board and we clearly have engaged and energized local boards. Uh, who want to see this plan be successful. So I've heard a lot of good things in this conversation that I think. Um, will help us together succeed in our mission. Uh, and the implementation of the strategic plan. So um, I'm excited. I hope everyone is excited and. We have reason to feel a little discouraged from our last two years of uh. Experience, but we have every reason to feel excited about opportunities that are in front of us. And we simply can't let this fail. We must be successful uh, for the kids of Maryland. And uh, I know we will be with your help. Uh, with all of our stakeholders involved uh, in the success of our plans. Uh, we won't fail and we, we will succeed. So I appreciate uh, everyone's thoughts and. Conversation and participation. Thanks.
We have a few more minutes. Are there any general comments a lot as I mentioned before? Uh, we are very. Open if you would want us to attend or participate. In a local board meeting or conversation, please let us know. We're more than happy to do that. Uh, one of the things that we are thinking about now in this post-Covid, we were starting to think about it, then Covid hit. Was we would like to take our board on the road at least once or twice and sort of test it. So take and, and host a. Uh, one of our state board meetings at one of your facilities, one of your locations. So. That's something that we would be interested in doing as well. That would also give us. An opportunity to meet with you and other uh, local boards and maybe uh, folks from the region. And just meet with people. It's just so much better when we can do that. So. Please let us know if there's some opportunities like that. We'll take you up on that. And again, like Chip said, our goal is. Is figuring out what do we do for children? I think there was a, there was a sign behind, uh, a little plaque behind. President Reagan's desk. It's read something like this. There's no limit to how far you can go if you don't worry about who gets the credit. So we're not worried about the credit. We're just figuring out how do we get, how do we draw a line now? How do we get this thing moving? And how do we then uh, do this for the benefit of our children? So are there any other? Closing comments or observations that you want to share with us? Want to do this again? We'll figure out how to do it. Yes.
I, I have one more or one last one. Um, and, and I, I mean, I appreciate everyone that every, or everything that everyone has said today. Um, the one I am that. We did not talk about is money, right? I am not an educator. I am not. Um, I don't have a degree in education. It is in finance and economics. And um, as all of us have just come out of our budget season. Right? Um, you know, it was, it was somewhat painful for the smaller counties. Because the amount that we've been told for the past three years that we were going to receive from the state didn't come to fruition. Right? And then on top of that, we had the pension pushed down from the state and then we had the shortage in compensatory ed. Okay? All of that happened during the legislative session. We sent our local delegation armed with information on how we were short, you know, what our shortfall was. And um, you know, unfortunately, they didn't get any traction. I know that that all comes through Governor Hogan's budget. I know he put in a supplemental budget to help some of the larger counties. But you know, we are, we are doing a lot of. New programs and implementation and, and keeping, you know, teachers and our staff and everyone paid and happy with um. What it seems like minimal funding year after year. So um, you know, in our case, what ninety seven percent of our budget goes directly to teacher salary and benefits. And I'm sure that's the case across the board. So, you know, if, if the state board and MSC wants to know how they can help us, then they can help advocate. For us for additional money. Because I know Pazam sent a letter, I know Mabe sent a letter, all about the problems with the compensatory ed. Which was quote unquote a mistake because it was based off of the farms applications. That everyone in the state should have known, and I'm not blaming any of you, everyone should have known we're down because our, you know, because the federal government picked up the, the, you know, the bill. So, you know, that's, that's what we, that's what some of our challenges are, you know, we, we need help in that area. Especially, you know, when something like that comes down the pike in January, February, and we are all in the mid, middle of budget season.
Okay. Want to talk to you more about that?
And with the AIB able to withhold um, a, a, a significant portion of our funding. For the coming, for each coming year, um, we can't put together a budget. If twenty five percent of it is going to be off the table until later in the year. Um, you know, we, we, we can't, uh, we, we have to have a balanced budget. We can't, we can't run a deficit. So. That is an issue um, that is going to hit us very hard. Um, and, and we're going to need your help. It, I, I understand accountability. I understand that if we are not doing what we're supposed to do. That we have to be held accountable, but to do so prospectively is not going to work, period.
Okay. Alright, got that. Absolutely. I'm a finance person myself and a former life, so. I'm learning education. Superintendent says it's sort of slowly that I'm learning it, but. Like progress.
Um, I'll just add, there is a conversation to be had whether or not as designed, um, the dollars um. Are going to be able to pull off what the vision is and, and it's a fair conversation. Um, you know, Pazam hosted. Uh, the chair, um, um, or vice chair of, um, and architect, um, um, Britt Kerwin and Rachel Heiss in a session. Where the topic was exactly that. It was the career ladder to get to sixty to do that. And um, um, uh, uh. You know, Scott and St. Mary's did a great job of just laying out very sophisticatedly, like it's not for not trying, it's just not there. In terms of how it's designed to be able to do this. And so, um, you know, they heard aloud and clear. Um, I think it's a matter of there's going to have to be adjustments um, or additions. Um, I think it's more of an addition, right? Especially, you know, your maintenance of effort and how it's designed. All counties are not uh, created equally and how they view, how much they want to give and how much they want to. You know, not give. Um, and so all of those things are front and center and um. And we have also, like, for example, for this year of the withholding of the twenty five percent, our take is they're developing their plans and they have to do it. Just push it down, like frankly, like this year, there's, there's nothing, we can have this conversation now, how accountability works, but this year. Push it down because they can't really develop their plans, especially if you're a smaller county. Uh, you know, it's different for like a Montgomery County that can forward fund things versus the smaller counties, you know, like Kent or others. So, um. It is, it is on top of my team's mind, uh, just so you know, on, on those kinds of things. Um, and so I, I don't think as designed, the dollars are right. I'll just say it as the state superintendent, I think we need to make some adjustments there. Especially around the teacher pay issue and topic. Um, and I think the state will have to um, figure that out and, and we uh, just know that MSD. Will not be quiet about that topic as well. Um, I can't give you an answer what that looks like, because. Um, but it does require bringing in Annapolis and such along, um, and, and things like that. So I just wanted to share that component. Uh, because it is top of mind. Um, otherwise, we're going to reach, um, we're, we're going to have these uh, situations where people are like. Hey, we, we missed this deadline or we couldn't put this in, but you know, we, or we have to make these cuts somewhere else, but that, that, we shouldn't be in that situation. If we're about to invest billions of dollars in our systems. So I'll stop there Clarence.
Very good comments. Definitely making notes of all of the comments and uh, once we've completed, I think the last session is mid, mid November, uh, mid, mid um. Mid-July, uh, we're going to wrap this up and we're going to have some conversations about what, what can we do? We want to again, keep the conversation, the line of communications open. And figure out how we can do a better job. We got the message. As Chip summarized about communications and strategy and staying focused. Um. And we're not afraid to take on tough issues if this is what we need to do. I think part of what we as part of education needs to continue to do. Is to demonstrate that we are a good investment. That putting money in education is a good investment. One of the line items that you're going to see next week and we'll. We'll, we'll get this to you, but next week is uh. That survey and that I mentioned, we have. Over twenty-two thousand uh, respondents across Maryland. One of the interesting things was there was a question in there about. How important is the quality of education to the success? To Maryland's success and. Across all groups. All sectors. Just about eighty-five, it was pretty consistent, about eighty-five percent of the respondents said it was very important. So that's going to be good to, to do. And I think again, to, as you've mentioned here, publicize, publicizing our success, we have to. We have to be able to sell that investing in us is a good investment. It's that, that things happen. Good things happen with the investment. So again, um. Chip, did you have anything more you wanted to say?
Uh, I, I don't Clarence. Uh, again, I just do want to thank everybody for your input. And we look forward to more conversation and uh, also to implementing some other ways. In which we can feel more connected in our relationship. I think that's important. Uh, you only build trust as someone else has said, through relationships and uh, anything we can do to foster that is important. Uh, you all are on the front lines. Uh, you're, you're implementing policy and change. For our educational system. So you are critical players uh, in the mission and uh. Look forward to talking more about how we can uh, be better connected.
Thank you everything, for everything that you do for our children. The time and the energy that you put in. Thank you so very, very much for that. I guess at this point, we will then conclude for the day, but we will be back in touch. We again, thank you for taking time out during the midday to uh, talk with us and to share. Ideas and suggestions. We really appreciate that. Have a great day and a great week. Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you.